We're recording.
We're recording. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law in 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Would you like to stand for salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see that we have anybody from the moose.
Okay, so we'll go right on to item number two. I'd like to invite Mr. Tim Hart of the Ocean County Historical Society up tonight.
Thank you very much. This is Nick Wood from our office.
Hi.
I'm here on behalf of the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders, specifically Freeholder John C. Bartlett Jr., who had planned to come to each of the towns and make this presentation, unfortunately with his health, not able to do that. So, my poor stand-in, but Nick and I are here to do the best we can. So, these flags are, and Nick is responsible for both of these projects, these are service flags that were very popular during World War I. They were actually invented during World War I. A man thought he was gonna make a million dollars in war by inventing it. You probably remember Saving Private Ryan or something, where they had them in individual houses. But towns did these. Up in Newark, the Prudential Insurance had one that had like three thousand stars for each of the people who served. So, these were made by the Seaport Stitchers in Tuckerton, out of Tuckerton and the general area. And so, there are thirteen stars, twelve blue and one gold. And the number at the bottom is our best guess of it, of how many people from Lacy Township serve. And the two at the top are the two that passed away. Some towns, it was really hard finding an original. Some towns would have a silver for people who were wounded and so forth, but it's pretty remarkable. I think Lacy had around four hundred and fifty people during World War I, so about ten percent of your people, ten, ten percent, were actually serving during the war, which is remarkable. Out of a population of twenty thousand in Ocean County, twenty-four hundred we've identified. The numbers are difficult because they have to come through newspapers. And I thought maybe Nick could just share, and so, in front of you, anybody who would like one, this is a list of everyone from Lacy Township who served in World War I. And there were two deaths, and I just thought, if you could explain the two deaths, please.
So, the good news is that the two who died did not suffer in combat. The unfortunate thing is they did still perish. They were, one was overseas in France, and he caught pneumonia in the trenches and was sent to a field hospital there, where he was not able to recover unfortunately. And the other one was serving aboard a navy just for looking for submarines to keep the ships safe. So, in both cases, they did die from influenza, which killed almost as many as actual combat casualties during the war.
Very.
So.
Excuse me, one second, Tim. We're gonna wait a few minutes so everybody comes in, 'cause the noise, it's kinda, you know, rude. This gentleman's trying to speak and we got everybody coming in, so we're gonna wait a couple of seconds. I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you like that, Bill? I didn't like that noise.
Is everybody, I guess this is everybody that was out in the parking lot, I would gather?
I think there's still more coming.
If you'd like.
Could somebody do me a favor? Back there, could you shut that door?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
So, what we've been doing in each town, and we've done five, this is the fifth town we've done, we've been asking the elected officials to stand for a photo in front of the flag. There's a little tag on the back of the flag. This is your flag now for your town, wherever you think it should be kept. But there's a little tag in the back, 'cause we know fifty or a hundred years from now, people are gonna say, "What was that flag?", right? And tell us what happened and about the Freeholder Bartlett and so forth. I don't know if you all noticed about Freeholder Bartlett, but he was an all-but dissertation, PhD for history. And he had, he taught both at the high school, at Tom's River High School North, and at Ocean County College. And so, for World War I, he said, "I'm gonna read a hundred books", but he's never satisfied to just do that. So, he actually got up to a hundred and twenty books, and they're like seven hundred pages each. And he said, "Will you read this one?" I said, "Okay." So, I read the book over the weekend, and I came in and he asked me questions, and I got them all right. I was really happy. And he said, "Did you read the footnotes?" And I said, "No, I didn't get a chance to read the footnotes." So, I'm sure he's very sad. He really wanted to do this. And on November eleventh, the actual hundredth anniversary of the armistice on the courthouse steps up at Tom's River, we're gonna do a ceremony. The American Legion donated a 1917 cannon, and we're doing a little ceremony up there, and we're ringing bells at eleven o'clock. So, in the whole county, there were seventy-five deaths. Could I ask you all to stand next to the flag?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Item three, yeah.
Item three, special use permit, grand opening celebration, exit seventy-four, October sixth.
The exit seventy-four is a plaza, the plaza right off of exit seventy-four. As you come on Lacy Road, I know some of yous had gotten confused with thinking it was something with the parkway. There's a veterinarian hospital in there now, and a real estate office is going in there as well. And they're having a grand opening on Saturday, October sixth, from twelve to two in their parking lot. And they are obviously inviting all of yous to come out. I will be double-checking if they're doing a ribbon-cutting that day as well for you, Mayor. And they just, this has been reviewed by the zoning office, and it is in compliance with the approvals that they have received. And they have received their COs for the vet and, of course, the new ZAC shore realty. So, I just need a motion to approve it.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Request to post signs?
These are for two. Lacy Lacrosse is having registration, and as, typo there, and I apologize, is having their registration in October and in January. And in accordance with the nonprofit signposting, they are asking permission to post signs one week in advance of their advertised registrations. And then Popcorn Park Zoo is having their, under their nonprofit, a Rock to Adopt program this weekend, and they are looking to put out signs starting tomorrow as well.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's all I have for this agenda. Anybody have any add-ons?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll go right into township meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Like to have a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, second reading of 2018-28, amending chapter 323, Vehicles and Traffic, so as to add stop signs and through streets.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 323 of the Township Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, so as to amend section 323-27 entitled Schedule Four Through Streets, and section 323-28 entitled Schedule Five Stop and Yield Intersections, so as to provide for additional through streets and stop yield intersections in Township. The new through street will be Basin Road between Laura Boulevard and Bowlsford Point. So, that would then have stop signs on Chestnut, Sycamore, and Ash Road, Ash Road being at Basin and Ash Road at Fresno. Second reading, open the floor to comments.
Scene, make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2018-29, amending chapter 211 Land Development Fees.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 211 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Land Development Fees, escrow deposits, and inspection fees. These land development fees are in accordance with our settlement with the fair share housing for affordable housing. These are the fees that are paid by developers, residential and commercial, to help offset affordable housing projects in the Township, and is mandated by the courts. Second reading.
Second reading, open to the public. Scene, make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-242, authorizing an inter-local service agreement with the LMUA.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of inter-local service agreement with the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority for Road Improvements to East Lacy Road. This is to establish a new water line on East Lacy Road. The LMUA will be performing the work and providing the services, and the cost reimbursement will be done through the Township.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-243, authorizing the renewal of the Lacy Cooperative Pricing System between the LMUA and the Board of Education.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing renewal of the Lacy Township Cooperative Pricing System and authorizing the execution of a cooperative pricing agreement with the Lacy Township Board of Education and the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority. This allows all three of us, all three of our agencies to purchase in bulk such things as gasoline, diesel fuel, auto parts, that we will all share in the expense of such.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-244, appointing a Class II Special Officer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, appointing John J. Kate as a Class II Special Law Enforcement Officer.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-245, supporting the acquisition by the Ocean County Land Trust.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, supporting the acquisition of properties identified on Addendum A by the Ocean County Natural Land Trust Fund. This is for block thirty-five-hundred, lot one, and block twenty-five-hundred, lot seven-point-oh-one. As you know, it's been in the newspapers, and it's the Brunetti Track, as we call it, or some of us know it as Lacy Materials in the Forky River Mountain.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-246, authorizing the execution of a grant with the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of the National Crime Assistance Statistics Exchange Implementation Assistance Program Grant, NIBRS is the acronym for that. This is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. It's the new software program for crime reporting instead of the old uniform crime reporting system.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-247, authorizing the filling of a grant application for discretionary aid with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act, Local Aid Infrastructure Fund Discretionary Aid Program for the East Railroad Avenue Extension Project.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-248, authorizing the reduction of a site improvement guarantee for sea breeze at Lacy Phase Two D.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing reduction of a site improvement performance guarantee for sea breeze at Lacy Phase Two D, conditioned upon the posting of a new performance bond. The original performance bond is in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. It is being reduced down to six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, based on the improvements that have been made through the site.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-249, authorizing the refund of the progress.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing a refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-250, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Pay the bills. Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes, with noted extension zero-one-zero-two-one.
And, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license applications for the Loyal Order of Moose and the Women's Club of Lacy. Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have add-ons this evening, okay? First is a resolution number two-fifty-two. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the award of a contract for the purchase of bulk vituminous material to Bricklaw Corporation. We have gone out to bid this week. This is a contract that starts, actually, tomorrow and runs for a year. It is various different types of products, bulk vituminous concrete, FABC mix I five for sixty-six dollars a ton, mix number I two for eighty-two dollars a ton, and, where's the other one here? And the other one is sixty-seven dollars a ton.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
Next is resolution two-fifty-three. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco Incorporated for the rental of three John Deere six-twenty-four K loaders with quick disconnect couplers, two thousand seventeen or newer, for the fall twenty-eighteen leaf collection and the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen snow season.
Move it.
Seventy-six thousand, seventy-five thousand is the cost of the contract. Second. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
And, resolution two-fifty-four. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing release of a performance bond posted for Dunkin' Donuts by the Lacy Road Improvement Development LLC.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
The final that I have to add on is resolution two-fifty-five. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing release of a site improvement performance guarantee for cornerstone at Lacy Phase One, conditioned upon the posting of a maintenance bond. The maintenance bond will be in the amount of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliano?
Yes.
That is all I have to add on.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Jimmy. Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I really have, actually, two things. Lacy Day is on Saturday, so if anybody's got any ins with the weatherman, please. Last year, we had a great turnout. About thirty-five-hundred people showed up for that. And we've combined Apple Fest with Lacy Day, so it really makes for a nice day out. Hope everybody comes out and enjoys that. And the last thing is, school is open, so these kids are, so we've got some kids walking. And so, I'm just gonna ask the drivers to be a little bit more attentive. We've got some corners where you're not allowed to make right-hand turns during certain times. I think it's like six to nine PM and then three to six at night, or something like that. So, just be aware of that, so we don't have any accidents. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Committee, McQuinn?
Mayor, I think we have a lot of people who want to speak, so I'll pass tonight.
I think we do, too. Next is.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep my comments brief, too. I just want to remind everybody also to support Lacy Day and the Apple Festival, in particular, the Apple Festival. That's the only fundraiser for the historical society, and that's where they make their, most of their money to support the Schoolhouse Museum. So, please get out and support that. Thanks.
Committee, Kurtolo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to remind everyone, you know, Lacy Day is, it's for us, and it's for our businesses. It's for people to expand their footprint into our community and to get your name out there. So, it seems to grow each and every year. We will have our Congressman, MacArthur, there this year. We'll have a lot of different businesses, large and small, there. I want to thank the Congressman publicly for the work he's done, helping us and supporting us here in Lacy, and visiting us specifically with the nuclear plant. And just looking forward to this weekend, and as our Deputy Mayor has said, I do hope the weather holds. I believe it's a rain or shine event, and I know everybody will be out there. We're expecting about four thousand people, and certainly, everybody is welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll keep it as brief as I can, too, 'cause I know we're gonna have a lot of questions. But, Lacy Day, as they said, since we, this is the biggest crowd I think I've had since I've been mayor. This is great. I love seeing people come out. No, it's a great thing. You come out, and you voice, and that's what it should be about. When you don't see nobody out there, you know, people sometimes just don't care. And it's a great thing. I think I know why you're here. I don't read Facebook. I don't do any of that, so it's just hearsay. So, I'm, you know, we're here for you to listen, so I'm gonna keep it that brief. And as I always say, I want to make sure everybody, when you see somebody in this town that's a volunteer, please thank them for everything they do. They do a great job in this town. As there's been things said, even on the Cafres issue down there, with the sign up there, thanking the firemen are great in this town, everybody, and, you know, they mean a lot. I said this many a time, we have the best in this town. This town is great, and we make it even greater than it is. And I try to do that, and we all do it up here. I mean, we do a great job, I think, to keep everybody abrupt of what's going on. So, on that note, I'll open it up to the floor. Yes, sir?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dan Coleman. I've.
First of all, I've never gotten to meet you person to person.
But we can share pets.
Yes, we do. We do.
My, I am the founding partner of Cafres Inc., and also a co-owner with my partner in Cafres of the property that Cafres, the business of Cafres sits on, four-fourty Raphine Staff. My partner is Jogi Casquale, who's in the audience here somewhere back there in the crowd.
Right there.
The purpose of my coming here today, I know it's a zoning issue, I realize this, but since the Board of Adjustment is appointed by the Township Committee, or by the Mayor, along with the input of the Township Committee, I would like to, this entire board, to know what exactly transpired, transpired since the fire and in our attempt to get a zoning permit to rebuild. Okay? So, I have a, I have a timeline here. I'd like to just go over it very quickly. Fire, the tragedy occurred on Wednesday morning, the fifth of October of September. It was total shock and awe. Thank God, nobody got hurt. We're blessed that, that didn't, nobody got hurt. I tried to call the zoning officer to schedule a short little meeting. She was on vacation that week. So, I waited till the following week, and on Tuesday, nine-eleven, I spoke to the zoning, the zoning officer. Just requested ten minutes to come in, you know, and just explain what I was thinking, my cursory review of the rebuilding, rebuilding code, and, and just to have five, five minutes of her time, and to file a permit, quite honestly. The next night, I got a call, well, it's three-fifty-four-five PM, from Chris Reed, okay? He's the Community Development Officer. "Why are you coming in to meet Loretta?", all right? That's what the call, that's what, that's what started the conversation. I said, "I just want to go over the, you know, the zoning permit in order to rebuild." "Well, you can't rebuild. You can't rebuild. You have to move backwards." I said, "Well, my reading of the code, and I didn't go to law school, but I have enough knowledge of code, COA, and, and master plan to make myself a little bit dangerous." So, I said to him, I said, "Well, I can rebuild. In my opinion, I can rebuild. I just want to speak to the town and make sure everyone's on board with it." So, he said, "No, no, no." I said, "Then what's my purpose with Loretta?" "Nothing. There is no purpose for you going in to see Loretta. It's not, you're not gonna be able to rebuild in the footprint." Little arbitrary and capricious, if I, if I may say, okay? And that was it. And, and the bedside manner left a lot to be desired. So, maybe that, that's always a little something that's lacking after a tragedy. I got a call from my attorney, who's conflicted out of representing me on any appeal with the Township. He said, "Dan, just don't, don't file the zoning permit this week. Wait till Monday. We'll sit down with everyone. As long as you have a letter from an architect or engineer saying that it's a fifty percent rebuild." Now, I understand, I've learned a lot since then about the fifty percent or the percentages, that, that we should be okay. I get to the meeting, I walk into the meeting, and I look around. Three people from this, that are sitting up with you right now, Mr. Mayor, were at the meeting, along with the board, zoning board attorney, the engineer, and I forget, I forget who, and Chris Reed.
Planning board attorney, not zoning board.
The planning board, okay. So, so, and the reason I got from everyone, from the Chris Reed conversation, and from everyone at that meeting, that was arbitrary, right off of that, it was made abundantly clear. I think Mr. Quinn was the spokesman, and he said, "You're not gonna be able to rebuild." Just, without presenting any evidence, any facts, you're not gonna be able to rebuild. And the reason is, is that by us being allowed to build in the footprint of Cafres, where it exists, not expand, not doing, nothing, I'm not asking for favors. If it's determined that I can't, and it's proven to my satisfaction that we can't, we're big boys. We can take care of what we gotta take care of. But, in all fairness, if we're entitled to that right, and the, some of the best employees anyone can ever ask. We have seen everything and exercised any and all rights that we're entitled to, all right? The reason I was given by Mr. Reed, Mr. Most, and Mr. Kennis can't, said another reason, but concurred with those two.
You mean a Mr.?
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Quinn. I'm sorry.
A blast from the past.
But, the reason I was given is, is that by allowing us to build in the existing footprint, it may jeopardize the town center designation that you'd have to get state approval. That's quote-unquote the reason. Now, it's my fault if I have a right to build on that site, that you guys, quite honestly, couldn't get this town center approved for many years? There's nobody in Trenton even working on those plans right now. And it's to protect a large developer that was, who's paying for the preparation of those plans, of that application, that Cafres application. That was abundantly spelled out to me. I know the man is very behind the Ed Wood, is very, 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 very powerful, very, very strong, very, he's a very substantial shareholder in Hard Rock even, at this point in time. So, he's, he's very experienced in development. The background I have on him, I met him once at a Make-A-Wish thing years and years ago, but he's very litigious if he doesn't get his way. So, I don't know why the protection of the town is there for this. I know he can't get, because of density requirements, can't get the two-hundred-plus units of low-income housing approved behind the commercial project. But, and I admire him for gaining your support and backing him up. A liquor license, which is available to be sold, is even being protected, so that it can be sent to that site, right? So, that it can be put on those sites up there, north of Lacy Road. So, and I won't even have to go there with that right there, but it's, the way our rights to just pursue, if we are able to rebuild in the footprint, were just chopped away from us at that point. So, I have an architect, who's the only professional who walked through the site, who said that, in his opinion, it's less than fifty percent destroyed, okay? Everyone knew that beforehand. We were prepared to bring a letter to that effect at that, at that meeting that we had. So, right after the meeting, I filed the appeal. On the twenty-first, I was issued a denial, referencing the three-three-five subcode right there, in general. And I amended the appeal because I was worried about semantics, whether it's restore, restructure. So, I just put that in, and I was informed via email from the zoning officer that the original denial stood, that they're synonymous, the two words, and that's it. they're synonymous, the two words, and that's it. I have one, everyone to know, I've hired another attorney. I am going to appeal that decision right there. Okay? I owe it to both my family, the D. Pasquale family, and every person that. I'm not asking for favors. I don't want favors at this point. I want what is, what we are entitled to do. And that is respectfully what I'm asking for. And I'm not gonna just, nobody is gonna take those rights away from me if I'm entitled to them. That I can assure them. Thank you.
If I could, because I, you know, you, you made the comment that I was the spokesperson at that meeting. So let me back up a little bit because a lot of the comments you made were, were comments that you have, in your mind, you believe to be true, which, you know, this board has different opinions than you do. But let me just start.
But I'm Dr. Ford.
Wait a minute, I didn't interrupt you. And that's what I feel is wrong with right here. Now, you know, we're trying to play this out in the media. Just so you understand, and I want this to be very clear to everybody in this room, you have never been told that you don't have the ability to go seek an approval to rebuild on that footprint that exists now before our Board of Adjustment. But there are rules and regulations in place that anybody that comes into town, or if you're in town already, must conform to. Backing up a little bit, the conversation you're indicating took between, took place between Mr. Reed and yourself. We were made aware of that conversation immediately upon it happening that evening. Mr. Reed reached out to the governing body members and to our administrator. And the end of that conversation, according to Mr. Reed, was, you said your time is too valuable, get it right, and when you do, give me a call. So we understand you were upset, Dan. Don't, don't, you know, get us wrong. We understand you went through a tremendous tragedy. You have a lot on your plate right now, but we're not the enemy. We want to try and work with you. The meeting that was called for, which took place on Tuesday morning, was called for by Jerry Dasty, who was, I know we represent you guys, but unfortunately, he's in a conflict because he does work for the town. And he's Joe, Joe's, and Pam, he's Pam's brother and Joe's brother-in-law. And, and we set the meeting up immediately upon the request coming through because we knew the time was so critical and that we wanted to get this thing moving forward as quickly as we could. We met that Tuesday morning. We gave you options, you know, that we had available to us that we could work with within the confines of the codes and restrictions that any developer has to work within. The denial which was given to you was based on the fact that the building has been destroyed and it has to come up to today's standards and codes. We explained to you that morning that there's a lot of variables involved here, town center being only one of the variables. And I don't, where you're getting this thing from that we're protecting any developer edge of property is beyond me. Because we made it very clear to you, we reached out to developers and everybody that needed town center, try and get some cooperation and, you know, people donating to the fund so that we would not have to take and put the burden on taxpayers themselves. We met with you two years ago when you wanted to take and extend your business on a separate piece of property so you could get around the Cafres thing. Let me finish because I didn't interrupt you. And we gave you an approval back there to build a second bar. We waived parking, we waived asphalt parking, we waived a ton of stuff. We are the best, you know, most developer-friendly town in this area to work with. And up until this situation has happened, we've had a great relationship with you, which I hope we can get past this and get back on track. When we sat in that meeting that, the Tuesday morning and your architect was there, Tommy Lunudo from town, another gentleman who's a good architect, he, the question was posed to Tommy, if you have the ability to take and rebuild this building at that site, because you kept harping on the fact that it's not 50%. Our building inspector and our building department and our zoning officer believes it is 50%, but that's not even what the denial was based on. But the question was posed to Mr. Lunudo, if we took and asked you what you would have to do to start reconstructing that building, how much of that building's gonna have to be, be taken down so that you can restart? And the answer was, it would go down to the slab and the steel girders that are in the building. If that's not more than 50%, Dan, I don't know what is. Because that's the conversation. You had two insurance inspectors sitting in the room as well as yourself and Dan, or Joe and Jerry Dasty. And I posed the question to the insurance people, how much of the building has been destroyed? Is this a total loss or what's gonna happen? They wouldn't answer the question. So, you know, we couldn't really give an answer on, on the insurance end of it. The only thing they told us that you, you, thank God, you had good insurance and that you have protection for a year as far as your operation of your business. So you're not, you know, you have a year to get this thing up and rebuilt. You have never at any point in time been told you can't take and rebuild. The problems we have is we have to overcome, you know, the fact that, you know, the zoning is what the zoning is. The DOT is very involved in this process at this point in time because as you know, you're on a very difficult corner when it comes to traffic. They want the building to be pushed back. But again, if you go before the Board of Adjustment and you win at the Board of Adjustment what you're looking to do, DOT will not have an involvement in the process. So you have that ability to do it. And instead of taking and going down the road where you want to just drag this thing out long-term and play this whole thing out in the media, you know, I think you should look at that. Look at the possibility of the Board of Adjustment saying to you, okay, you can do it. The only thing we told you when it comes to the construction of that building, because that used to be Gordon's Restaurant years ago, and one of the folks from Gordon's told us, you know, the footings under that thing are crushed concrete. So you would have to certify by an engineer that the slab is gonna be sufficient to build a new building and that the structure's gonna be safe for the public to be in when, when it's built. You know, if, if you can get that approval from the Board of Adjustment, Dan, we'd love to see the place rebuilt. We will go there. I mean, it's not something that we don't take and utilize ourselves. But you're making us out to be the bad guys when you have options available to you. There has never been anything said to you by the Township of Lacy that you're not allowed to rebuild. And then you come up with this restore thing. Restoring is something that occurs when you have super storm Sandy. You know, people lost their houses, they had to restore inside their house. That's not a restore, Dan.
Actually satisfy or within, right there. I have a copy.
Yeah, the synonym, yeah. I know the synonym for restore and rebuild is exactly, you know, because they researched that. And again, you have to realize, these are people that are licensed by the state of New Jersey, the zoning officer, to take and make a determination to take and do what they have to do. But we're not treating you any different than any other developer that walks in.
Did anyone who made those decisions walk the entire site?
Our building inspectors were out there. Because they called me.
Walked the site. Nobody did, except Lunudo. He walked the entire site.
Dan, the day of the fire, our inspectors were out there because I was on my way to a meeting at Tom's River and I got a call because they were gonna demo the whole building that night because of safety. And I told the, you know, I asked the building inspector, don't demo the building until we have the insurance company and everybody has the ability to go in there and see that building. You can, you can pick up, you know, talk to Jerry, Chris, any of the family members because they called me. And I, I know that they'll verify that.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in and concur with everything Mr. Quinn said. He, that's accurate. Nobody ever told you that you could rebuild.
You said I could rebuild if I moved back 100.
We said, we said.
Without clearance.
Can I speak? Can I speak, please?
Go ahead.
You had all kinds of pre-conceived ideas of how many parking spots I would lose, how much it would affect. If I lose parking spots, I lose seats. If I lose seats, I lose employees.
Mr. Coleman, this is you.
You can call me Dan.
Dan, this is not, you're not the fir-, unfortunately, you were not the first or probably the last restaurant to burn down in town. This town, this town has had three restaurants, since I've been here.
Twenty-four years ago to this date, I signed the lease on that same property that was burned down at the town.
I've been, I've been here my whole life. Went to elementary school here, high school here. The first restaurant to burn down here was what everybody knows as Zrela's Restaurant. Before that was Oyster Bay. Oyster Bay burned down, they had to submit a new site plan. Duffy's burned down, they had to submit a new site plan. Fork River House burned down, they had to submit a new site plan. We are not asking you to do any more or less than we've asked any other applicant.
But I was told I had to move 100.
But Dan, let me just talk about that.
We didn't tell you, no, we didn't, no, no. Let me touch on that. It's because when you sat in that meeting that day, we made it very clear to you, if you don't have the ability to get the approval from the Board of Adjustment to build on the site that's exactly where it is now, all we were looking for you to do was take and flip the building with a 100-foot setback bit on that zone right now. We told you, we would be able to work with you and probably push it back 30 or 40 feet and put parking in the front and parking around the back. We went so far as to tell you that we would probably be able to have the board move in the direction of, if you're gonna fall short on parking spots, we'll work with you. We give waivers on parking all the time. You have a hardship that can definitely be justified if you go before the planning board and look for that hardship. The problem.
So now I'm before the planning board also?
Or if, if you're gonna move it back. If it goes to Board of Adjustment, you're, you're in a different ballgame. You have to, the proof of burden is on you.
I want the zoning officer and two members of the Board of Adjustment, I believe you both are on the Board of Adjustment.
No, we're not. We're on the planning board.
You're on the planning board. Okay, so.
And, and let me just say, if, if we take, you know, this governing body has no authority to take and turn the train another way. This governing body only makes decisions to appoint people to boards. If we were to take and say to you, okay, Dan, you can take and build a building there, you know, we don't have that ability to do it.
The zoning officer does.
Only if it falls within the confines of the codes that she has to work with it.
And we will need it does.
It doesn't.
But it was hurt and you have rights to appeal that though.
No!
But that's where you're, you're violating every setback there right now. You're in the site triangle on the corner.
So it's a non-justifying use and the code, and the code provides for rebuilding, restoring, whatever, within the site.
But sir, it provides for a rebuild if you're not substantially damaged.
Then it could stay.
A determination has been made that you're substantially damaged. You went before the zoning officer for the permit, correct, to rebuild?
Absolutely.
It's within her purview to decide whether or not you received that permit. She decided that you were gonna be denied that permit. As a result, you have the right to appeal and that's the process that we're all discussing now.
Right. So I am appealing that decision. Okay? I am absolutely positively appealing that decision. Early next week, within the 20-day statutory limit, it'll be, it'll be filed. And I will take bets with anybody sitting on this board that it's overturned, the zoning decision.
Dan, let me just tell you, I'm not an attorney, but, but the chances are, it's gonna be remanded to the Board of Adjustment. Lauren, they're gonna say, go before the Board of Adjustment because that's the authority that has the decision. You can do that now. Make the application. Go before the Board of Adjustment.
I want to appeal the decision.
Well, I mean, God bless you. Whatever you want to do, we're not gonna tell you do one thing versus another. But you are not being told by anybody in this town that we don't want to see that place rebuilt. Believe me, that's not the case.
We don't want to rebuild where it sits.
We can't give you that ability to do that without going before the board because they...
We will be before the board. I was hoping to get it, to expedite it with the, with the.
We don't have that authority, Dan.
And I disagree, based on my readings of the, of the code. I respectfully disagree.
And you're well within your rights to.
Absolutely positive. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
I wasn't gonna do this, Dan. I'm Jerry Pasquale from Fork River Cafres Tavern. Just to say something to Mr. Quinn, what are the three people that walked the site inside?
I was told by, your nephew called me that night, asking for the building to be not knocked down.
I'm asking the three people that you said walked the site and walked inside the building.
I was told that our building inspector was down there.
Yeah, it is.
And, or, well, there's two of them that were down there to walk the site.
Who are they? What's their name?
Dougie Jim.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean.
They walked the site. I seen them walking around the building. I never seen them walk in the building.
Well, in the building, the day of the fire is a little difficult.
I understand the day of the fire, nobody got in the building. At 10 o'clock the next morning, there was a fence around it and I had the key. And to this day, nobody's asked me to get in that building to see what was in there. There's walls up. Gary, there's still place setting on the table.
Yeah.
That front dining room is not touched.
Joey, if it, if you want us to walk the site, I will be happy to come down and walk the site. But we're still in the same situation where we'd have to go before the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, that's fine.
Because of the fact that the code is different from when it was built originally years ago. And, and the Board of Adjustment has every right to give you the option that you're looking for if they see fit. But they have to do it within the confines of law. And, and let me just tell you, and I didn't have the opportunity to tell Dan, the reason that these things are in place is, you know, Cafres has been here, it's, it's an icon of the community. We know that. They've been here, they've served the community, they've been, you know, involved in different community projects, they give back to the community. But at the end of the day, if we were to take and turn the corner and give Cafres a different right on this issue right now, every developer that comes in is gonna use that precedent moving forward. And we're gonna have sites built around this town, which we're not gonna be happy with and the taxpayers aren't.
So we take 70 families and put them on the street?
You're not putting anybody in it. No, no. From what we were told, the people are, they have jobs somewhere else. And we're hoping to get this place up and running as soon as you can.
You can't hold it against them. There's four or five people that have jobs.
Okay. And I, my heart goes out to the 70 people, but there's 11,000 people in this town. Is it, is it fair to the 11,000 people that we cut a corner here? I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, it's, it is a very difficult situation. There's no question.
You said it that day in the meeting, that you're not a builder.
Right. No, I said I'm not building anymore. I was building 38 years. I'm not building anymore. Yeah.
So what do you think the difference in price is of us moving, building where we are, if we're moving the site the way you want it to be?
It depends on the approval, what your approval is. I mean.
I'm not talking building lines. I'm talking gas lines and water lines.
Joey, it, it all comes down to whatever your site plan approval is. If you get, if you, let me give you an example. If you, the restaurant we approved you for in the back, had we taken and approved you at, at full-blown site plans, you know, all the bells and whistles that come with it, you'd probably spend another half million dollars. But we gave you a lot of waivers back there.
I'm not talking about you guys. I'm talking about.
No, you're talking dollars. I mean, Steve, Steve's on the board. We, we gave you, yeah. As many waivers as we can to try and get the thing done, but still staying within the confines of the codes that we have.
Okay. The other thing, just real quick, on the, on the other project that we're thinking about doing. You said.
Which project?
The backyard.
The back, okay.
You said that we didn't have to pave that or anything.
You're paving a part of it. Yeah, you're utilizing, don't forget, the approval that you have back there utilizes the parking from Cafres as well as the parking from, from the new bar that you want to build in the back. The way we got around that, which, you know, we do occasionally when, when businesses come and ask us, is we're gonna give you a shared parking agreement. Because if you didn't get a shared parking agreement, you didn't want to utilize every little property there because you're trying to save the house in the front. So we worked with you. We gave you a shared parking agreement so that the combination of parking between Site A and Site B are gonna be utilized for, for both restaurants. Because you're under two separate ownerships.
Yeah, you can't forget that. We gave you a shared agreement when you realistically wouldn't have been able to build a tiki bar without the shared agreement.
Okay. The other question I have, and it probably doesn't have anything to do with anything, but it upset me the day you said that now the Cafres building isn't there and you can make a turn on, red on right at the Wawa.
That light is a thorn in the side of everybody in this town. That light backs up the traffic for.
You made it sound like I lost my business.
No.
So you can make it right, or Mr.
No. That, your building is, it's, it's legitimately in the site triangle. The state will not fix that light because your building is in a site.
Until our building's gone.
It's just, it's, we would do it for any other business. It's, it's in the way. I mean, it is.
All right, all right. Everybody, everybody, please, please.
Joey, let me just tell you.
All right, no speaking out of order or your people are gonna be sent down. Please. Everybody has their opportunity to talk.
Everybody can speak. Be honest with you, Joey, when it comes to that light, this governing body would rather see the light not there. Because that light is a.
Take it down.
We can't. The state put it there. And that backs up traffic all the way back up to Lakeshore Road.
Back to Dave Most.
I'm Dave Most.
Well, I think we can, I think we have to sit down again and rectify it for these people.
Yeah. We told you when you walked out that day, you want a meeting, we'll set up a meeting within 24 hours.
That's fine, Gary, but, you know, the meeting was set that day and it was an ambush. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you it was an ambush.
By no means was it an ambush. It wasn't meant to be. Yeah.
I didn't even sit down before you said we weren't.
Do you recall, we told you, if you push the building back, we're not looking for 100 feet, you can put it back 30, 40 feet?
No, you said 100 feet.
No, we didn't. I said to you, I said, you can do exactly.
The code might be 100. I don't know what the code is.
Yeah. Joey, you can do exactly what Charlie Brown's did. Have a rower parking in the front and put the restaurant back 40 feet.
Why can't we do what Oyster Bay did and build on the same site?
We got a new site plan.
Fork River and built a new site.
You can. Nobody.
Okay.
They went.
They required a full site, there's an all-new site plan. They were, it's the same boat as you. They had, it's all-new site plan. They had an all-new site plan.
We, we don't need a new site plan because we set the zoning map and we're building exactly as the site we're doing. No terms, nothing different with the site. That's what we're, we're, we're asking to do. As it was, it will make it as it will be, just as it was. We're not asking for anything. What?
Using the same walls?
The same walls, the same walls. At least three of the four walls. We're not asking to expand, to change. We're not asking to put additional space on.
Dan, the only, you're asking the wrong board. You have to go before.
I just want to make you guys aware of it. That's all.
Yeah, if, if you go before the Board of Adjustment and present your hardship case, I can't say what they're gonna vote on, but you know, you have a legitimate beef. I mean, I, I'm just saying, go to the board and try and seek relief from the board.
It would be much easier to get a zoning permit next.
But, but she's got responsibilities to work within the confines of the codes.
She listens, she works directly under Chris Reed and Community Development Officer.
Can't do it. She, she would lose her license. I'm telling you, if the code says what it says and she issues a zoning permit, she's gonna lose her license.
And I guess we gotta litigate what the code says. That's all, that's where it's at.
I'm almost done.
Sorry, Joe.
They invite you to come here and walk the site.
I would like to walk the site too.
Um, I'll give you a call tomorrow. Possibly tomorrow afternoon.
Call Cafres number, it still works.
Anybody else? Sir?
Here it comes, Mr. McDonald. My name is Don Roxton. I live at 504 Holmes Avenue North. Okay, Mr. McDonald and I have had many, okay, discussions before in the Dunkin' Donuts, but we won't bring that one up, okay, because that's totally illegal in town right now, but we won't go there. Mr. Kennison and I have multiple things. Mr. Quinn and I are friends. Who on this board, okay, is the liaison to the Board of Adjustment, so that Joe knows who he's talking to. Everybody has a liaison, okay?
Yeah.
So Joe, there's your man, right there. You have a problem, it's the mayor.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Nobody else wants to talk?
Nobody else?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ask you a question. Is it standard procedure to have building inspectors show up to an ongoing active fire scene?
Yes.
I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask a question.
But not run into the building.
Anybody else?
Say, "Nan, I make most of your clothes in the floor." Sorry.
My name is Michael Joseph Weisen Jr. I live at 314 Chelsea Street. I would just like to first state that I am not in any way being put up to anything by Dan or anyone. And I just, I know that you guys only have so much that you do, like, as far as with the rebuilding.
Authority.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want everyone to understand, like, where we're coming from. I started at Caffrey's in 2009, September, and since then, I've grown to know and love all these people.
Twenty-two.
They say that blood is thicker than water, and there's a lot of water in blood. All my coworkers, and definitely plenty of the regulars, are my family. I feel like a piece of meat died that day. And the more that this is prolonged, the worse it is for all of my family. This whole town is practically my family, because of that place. So, I just want everyone to know that. Thank you.
My name is Bob Ellis. I'm at 25 San Bar Drive in Bayville. About 18 years ago, I built Caffrey's Crossing off of Tammy Alley. At that time, the zoning officer was so concerned that all these roads in the back are going to become main roads, which they have. Everybody's using the cut-throughs, all behind 7-Eleven, anywhere you go, you could get somewhere without taking Route 9. I built Mountain Millwork in Bayville, cost $250,000, because they said Route 9 is going to get widened, okay? Never happened. You're talking about a site triangle? That's not going to stop anything. All these other people know how to get to where they got to go. If you can't take 9, take another road. And that's what they're doing. It's ridiculous. The other thing, you're holding up a business, all these people are affected. If you lost your job today, what would you do?
Get a job.
Yeah, you hope. It's not that easy. It's not that easy.
I'm not that old.
You want to go, you know it. Yeah, it's not going to happen. And the other thing is, if it costs them more money, okay, who's going to Georgia? The people in here. No more good food, because they want to raise their prices, they're going to lose business. I don't think it's right.
Believe me, we feel everything in this room, we want to see it back up and running as soon as we can. That young gentleman just spoke, you can see, this is a unit that's been together so long.
No, it is.
And we recognize that, but we all only have so much authority when it comes to these things.
I understand that.
And the authority is at 40.
There's other things that you could do if you did understand, and if you did care about them. I don't believe you did.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Before you continue, I have to say something.
Sure.
I spoke to Dan Coleman. Believe me when I tell you, that morning when I got called, I was down there. I know how you're all being affected, believe me. We, I reached out to this gentleman, I work for a gentleman, we're into that business, and we were told, we will try to get you in any place we can, throughout Ocean County, in different connections, and I did say that to you, Mr. Coleman, am I right? Okay? The Donna Freo family will get them in any locations as much as we can, and give them back to them. We want to see that. That's an iconic place, okay? The gentleman that I work with, okay, built that place in Gordon, and when I brought him down there, he cried.
I bet.
Okay? Gordon cried. And Gordon is one of the toughest guys you want to meet. And he cried. And when we got that phone call, and I knew, and when I went down there, and after I spoke to some people, they said, Nick, you got, that's an iconic place, it brings, and we know it brings people to the town, it employs 70 people. Am I, 70, is that what it is? I did not realize that.
Yes.
Okay? I should have, because a restaurant that we have, we do employ over that. And I never realized that Caffrey's had 70 people, but, believe me, I feel for you, we want to, I'm pro-business, and all of us are up here. We want to see, we don't want to see anybody hurt. We want that.
But the longer it goes, the more money it's going to cost, the more people are out of work, a lot of people are single mothers. Where are they going to go? Where are you going to go? And like I said, I don't care what he says or anybody says, nobody's going to hire a sitter our age, you know it. You know it. I've been with builder that guard homes for 37 years, okay? If I left here today, I'm going on unemployment. If they burn down, it's not right.
Good job.
Hi, my name is Diddy Samhouser, I'm from Menlo. A little shaky right now. One thing that I want to ask is, when they go to the Board of the Adjustments, and say they're denied again, like, how long is this process going to go on?
They have the right to appeal, that's the Superior Court.
Okay, and then they appeal again, and then they go to another meeting, and then...
Well, the Superior Court's in Tom server, so it's not held here, if they get denied by the Board of Adjustment.
For here.
Yes, that's where it goes to Tom server, and it's handled by, you know, the judges up there.
All right, I was just curious about that, because we've all been out of work for quite some time now, and I know you said, you know, you'd just get another job. I'm a little old now to pull gains my ass off. Like, I would have to work six days a week, and make, to make the money that I was making three days a week.
I understand, yeah.
And everybody else... That just shows that people in our community that come there and eat, they're very generous, we love that. I mean, we have people that come every day, you know, and it's just...
The whites don't come.
I know you guys, I know you can't understand where we're coming from, but I know you're trying to, and we just hope that this process just don't keep going on and on, because we need a light at the end of the tunnel for us. You know, whatever you guys are going to say is going to happen, we just need to adjust our lives to come back to Caffrey's, because every single person in here that works for Caffrey's, yes, we got jobs other places, it's nothing like working at Caffrey's.
And we know that, yeah.
It's just a tough, you know, that we're going through right now. But we're all coming back, you know, that's what we're about. Like Michael said, we're all, he's my son, we're all family, you know?
Don't say that if any of them are working for Mr. P. Adams.
Yeah, we're good about that.
We will make everybody come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Castella, Delveco. I live in 26 Paul Bycourt. I've been working in Caffrey's for a really, really long time, pretty much as soon as I came to this country. I never find any home, because that's not a job, it's a home. It's a home, my kids grew up there, my son, he's 10 years old, and my wife used to be PA for my son at school. And he was really upset, you know, because he wasn't upset about me making the money, he wasn't upset about me going to work, he was upset about not seeing the people that saw him grow up, you know? And the same as unemployment. Okay, you find another job. I couldn't afford to go on unemployment, the place was burning down, and I had to go find another job. And I'd been treated so badly at these other places, I just had to get another job, because I cannot afford unemployment. I had two kids, I had to pay for school, I had to pay for the preschool program that the town has, that is not free, you know, that it should be free, because we all pay taxes. But it's just, it's not, we cannot get jobs, you know, we all can.
Just let me explain something. When the gentleman asked me, what would you do if you lost your job tomorrow, the common thing is, go find another job if you can. But I understand your situation, and believe me, you're telling us, you know, stuff that we 100% understand, we believe in, but we're in a venue here where we can't give the relief that Mr. Coleman's looking for. And the last speaker that spoke, the sooner the application gets presented to the Board of Adjustment, the sooner this process starts. And hopefully, this thing gets done within a three-month period, and start rebuilding this place. But we have to see some movement on the owner's part, to try and move forward, you know? And Dan, I understand you want to appeal, but you got the 21 days, or whatever it is to appeal it, but still start working on your application, because I truly believe you're going to be remanded to the Board of Adjustment.
I have architectural plans being developed right now on the...
Which is great to hear.
Inside, and engineering plans being done, too.
I mean, that's great, because we know at least when we get to that 21st day, whatever the decision is, which we have no ability to take and make it go one way or the other, then at that point in time, hopefully, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to sit down and get this thing on track, to the right board, and get this thing heard, so you can get going. I mean, that's, we're not your enemy, believe me, we're trying to do whatever we can to get this thing.
It's almost ironic that 24 years ago, to this day, I signed the lease on that property, and it was burned out, vermin-ridden structure with no CO at that time. And everyone embraced, we were walking through stuff, we had masks on because of the vermin and stuff, I'm getting yelled at by a carpenter, because I'm not putting the varnish on right in back in the day, and...
So this time, you learned, you can do it better.
If we can do it better, if we can do it better.
Start the process.
Before we started, Mr. Julian would like this bit of history. Before we purchased the liquor license from the town and signed the lease on the property right there with the Rithianos', Mr., my former partner, Tom Caffrey, myself, and Danny Donna Freo, we were looking at doing something down that was latitudes, right there, okay? We came very close to doing that. If you do talk to him, say hello to me. I haven't seen him in a long time.
Every day.
We took the long ride down there to work together on that.
And believe me, he had voiced his opinion, he hates to see anything happen, believe me, when I tell you...
He was 17 years old, and when he took over Sitters, and he brought me upstairs, trying to recruit me from who I was working with, and I never saw somebody cans of tomato sauce and kind of like, I remember it, you know, some things, I remember.
Just to end, you guys, you know, we all waited on you, we don't treat you like customers, you are our family, too. So we just, all that we're asking, and I understand what you said, is like, not to stop them, because even you guys are our family, we don't treat you like customers. So, all the help that we can get from you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? I know a few of you up here, my name is Chip Thompson, I live at 601 B. J. Ave. Been Lacey resident for 40 years, before I moved a couple years ago. Used to live off of Bayway, back off Claremore, had some issues back there, didn't need to quit going astray after Sandy and stuff, not here to discuss that. I work for Shore Point Distributors, we're one of the largest beer companies in New Jersey. Caffrey's is one of my territory accounts, I'm Ocean County Supervisor. I just wanted to say, I can't think of another, any place I deal with, every restaurant or bar in Ocean County, my company does six counties in New Jersey, it is a family. I have nothing in it, I get paid salary, I have nothing to gain or anything. Nick, we talk a little bit, we try to keep it separate, and I'm not here to cause any trouble, I hope you all can just do the right thing, and help them wherever you can. Sounds like there's some, just a junction board, or whatever it is. I'm fairly intelligent, Steve, we went to school together, you know, I'm not an idiot, but I have a correct turn. I hope there's some kind of, something coming. I'm glad tonight, there's some unruly crowd, I expected, like, the fellow and his boys to be here, like, the old 70s, the Parkers and all this shit, you know, outside. It's not the cannibal who runs stuffs, you know what I'm talking about? So, I hope something good came in this time, you hear some passionate speeches, I just like to talk, I'm going to get out of here, I got kids, I got four-year-old twins, I'm on the special needs, I'm going to get my ass kicked, I'm going to get home soon enough. So I just hope everything works out well for the families that are involved, and I love this town, I still, I moved seven miles, I didn't leave, I'm still here, I got my friends, I am damn holy, you know what I'm saying?
Just so you know, and I'm going to speak on behalf of everybody that sits up here, how they were affected when this happened, because we were all on the phone together with Gary. Believe me when I tell you, this is probably the most proactive group you want to see up here to get things done. And we've proven that. And I think that's why you said that people are out there, I think people know what we're about, we're not phonies up here.
I hope so, I hope that's true.
And I know these people will do everything they can, to, within their power, to get it done.
I hope there's some kind of agreement, it's not 40-foot, maybe it's 20-foot, you can get your right-hand turn, and there's something there, they can come to a quick agreement. Because I know, doing fires, I got Pine Beach Cop behind me, and his house burned down, I got the War Town Bar, it's another one affecting my sales, and he's on commission, so he gets paid, so that's affecting him directly. Can't help that. The liquor store business goes different, there's a lot of restaurants you can go to, you don't have to drink booze all the time, you know? So, anyway, I'm sorry to take up all your time. I'm out. Peace.
He's fine. Yeah.
Mike Joe there, 505 Crosswalk Avenue. Before I left tonight, I had the article actually cut out on my refrigerator, in the garage, and it said, "The heart of a town." I think it's up to us and you people up here to get this work, keep eating, to keep this place going. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Casey Connor, I live at 336 Briggs Avenue, Lacey, New Jersey. I've been going to Caffrey's since I could probably be this tall, with my parents who are here with me as well.
You weren't drinking that, were you?
No, I'm being of age, been able to go there a few times before it burned down. You know, I know you guys aren't the people to really, like, do anything about it right now, but if this does move back, that's going to cost more, and people could be out of jobs, jobs, and I know this is like a, a point that keeps being made, but a lot of these people, like, we're people who, we've all grown up with these people. Isn't it easy to get another job after this? For you, I mean, like, you have degrees.
I'm old, I can't get a job.
Well, you have degrees. Those, that speaks a lot. But, you know, if you could, you know, people that you know that actually make a difference, talk to them, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
We got one more, sorry. Let me sit too long and ask a question, sorry. Don Roxton, 504 Holmes Avenue.
We know.
So, let's just play hypothetical, okay? Joe and Danny decided they're going to go before the Board of Adjustment, and they go in, they go with the site plan, and that's acceptable. I think the white elephant in the room is, how long, okay? How long on your part? Not how long on his construction teams to come in and do the stuff, but how long before they can start building? And then, how long is it going to be before they're up and running?
Once...
That's, that's, I think that's what most of the people in this room want to...
All right. Let me just, if the Board of Adjustment approves it...
Yep.
This town has been known to issue the permits before the resolution is memorialized within 24 hours. So you could be up and running probably in 36. Now, wait a minute, now, wait a minute. If it's approved...
Yes, if it's not approved.
If it's declined, it's going to Tom's River.
To the courts.
And you're looking at a year before it'll be heard. So, that's, that's, that's the situation. And that's, I think, what, what you need to really do, Dan, is you really need to sit down and think about this, because if you get in front of the Board of Adjustments, that, that's actually a quasi-court, and evidence and everything else comes into play. And they've been known to, to go it. And we've, we've had ones up there for two years trying to get it there. Now, if you lose the Tom's River, you can go Trenton. So, this can go on. And I don't want that. I, I like Cafres. I want it open. I want it open. So I think we really need, we really need to get another meeting and get you the least path of resistance. That's what I think needs, has to happen. You got to come with an open mind. We got to come with an open mind. Sit down, we get this thing, we solve, and get you going, and start building down there. That's what I want for you.
Dan, let me just, let me just speak from the planning board, because Tim was on the Board of Adjustment for a lot of years before he joined us on the committee. Planning Board, same situation. You have to put the application in. You know, it would be if the building was to be twisted the other way and set back 30, 40 feet. But at the planning board, you have the ability to get waivers. You have the ability to, if you have less parking than you need, you'll get a waiver on that. You can ask for waivers on, you know, a lot of issues based on hardship, which generally would be granted based on hardship. The Board, the Planning Board has done things a little bit differently, where when we grant an approval, if the Board sees fit, they have the ability to actually read the resolution at the same night. We've done that in the past, which would get you a permit within 24 hours again. But at that point in time, it's, it's guaranteed, because chances are, you're going to go to the bank looking for financing. They're going to want to make sure that that resolution has been approved. So that gives you the resolution in hand right away, so.
I can just say this, and funny, every estimate, every cost estimate that I have, if we have to move that 30 feet, 100 feet, whatever it is, 2 feet, it's just, it just blows everything out of the water.
Yeah, yeah. Then, then your other option would be the best, to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Right. So that's, it's not another option. It's the only option. Okay?
I understand.
So that's the, that's the only option right there.
So, so make application from the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah.
That, that, don't, don't fight that way. The denial, don't fight it. Just go ahead and make, go ahead and just make the application.
No, no, no. They make the applications, because it was denied, they make an application to the Board of Adjustment for the denial.
To override.
Right, right, yeah. Just, just get in front of the Board of, as quickly, as quickly as you possibly can.
The Board of Adjustment means when? On Monday?
The first Monday of the month, but you'll have to contact the secretary to find out the deadlines for the paperwork and the processes that have to happen.
And just for the town meetings now, just so I know, the calendar says 7:30.
Oh, does it? I apologize if it does, it's 7:00.
The calendars that go out, 7:30 at 9:00.
Oh, I'll have to check that.
On the, I just was a little confused on it.
No, it's been 7 o'clock for, you know, it's not.
I saw something somewhere that it said...
But the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board are, are 7, and the Board of Health is 7:30.
On the patch of calendar, it says 7:30.
I'll make sure that's corrected for this new calendar coming out.
Just a little. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Jean Tatham, I live at 17 Sheffield Drive, Forky River. I just have a question. If in fact this building is more than 50% salvageable, are they grandfathered in?
There's no such thing as that. No, no.
No?
No. The denial was based on the codes and the offsets that are in place now versus what was there whenever Gordon was originally built.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, yeah. They used to have the best pies in town.
Not under damage, but just on where they said?
I'm sorry?
Not under damage?
There's no such thing as...
There's no such thing as grandfather.
There's no such thing as grandfather anymore.
It's grandfathering, we change it. So it's existing building, say, whatever was built, 1960?
Probably before that.
Whatever. It was built 1960, and the code's changing 70.
But it's not the only building on Route 9. I mean, that building over by the MUA is out worse.
Exactly. But if that building was to take and burn down, it would be the same thing. They'd probably have trouble rebuilding at all, you know, based on the existence of the parking there.
But that's a small piece of property.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, most of the property's in the back, in the parking area back there.
But you guys here are going to guarantee us, you're going to do everything in your power to help get Cafres and Mac up and running.
We will work as, as much as we can within our power. We can't, we can't tell boards what to do.
We support Cafres reopening, believe me, it's not a problem.
Absolutely.
Even my grandkids cry when they come home from the school back there. You know, it's an important part of this camp.
We recognize that. We, we just have to make sure we follow the rules to protect ourselves from developers from out of, out of state, out of the town, coming in here and trying to do something that's going to be against the codes. But I, I truly believe if Mr. Coleman and Joey go to the Board of Adjustment, everybody show up. You have a hardship. Go prove your case.
We'll be there. You might have to hold the neck of these high schools.
We want to make sure that we're going full steam ahead with that second project that was approved, that was fully approved and everything. Anything that happened here, there was references to cross out, has nothing to do with that project, correct?
The only thing it has to do with that project is between the two entities, you have a shared parking agreement. That has nothing to do with the township itself. That's between you.
You have those approvals.
Yeah, years ago, you had...
What I'm saying is that there's no...
It doesn't create a problem.
And maybe it's me being a little sensitive or whatever, but no animosity towards an approved project right now.
No, we couldn't.
You can start that project tomorrow, but post your bond again.
We'll start the soils and MUA next week, and...
Yeah. That's good to go, Dan. You can, as soon as you get those outside agency approvals, you can get a permit and start on.
And we're ready to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak?
Any other comments?
No, no more comments.
Make a motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Do you have anything I have to do to read the resolution to go into the executive